Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilmember Borton.
Here.
Mayor DeVeere.
Here. Item number two is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move we adopt the agenda as published.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, but just to note that item four A is being postponed.
Correct.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Item three, our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move we adopt the consent agenda as published for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Here.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes motion carried. Okay, item four, under Department Reports. Item four A is being moved to August 20th, so I will move to item four B, which is a review of the Ada County Highway District 2024 Integrated Five-Year Work Plan. And Ryan is here to present that to council.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I know you've discussed this recently, so I'll be, I'll talk about it a little bit. On July 17th, ACHD Commission approved and released their new five-year work plan, and on August 5th, the Transportation Department talked about it and had no topics of discussion to bring to city council. So let's review some of the, some of the changes that were made and that they're proposing. So a new project on Linder Road between Overland and Franklin that they're proposing that wasn't on their last five-year plan would just include widening the road in that section and a possible overpass, just to discuss it with ITD, which I know you guys recently talked about, and it sounds like ITD isn't super amenable to it, but it's on their plan. As far as advancing a project, they have a new project that is going on on Cherry Lane between Meridian Library and the middle school, where they want to do a pedestrian crossing. They have it originally scheduled for 2021, but they're advancing it to 2020. So that is exciting. As far as some less good news, we have a delayed project, a few delayed projects, but one of them, there are two of them on their plan, but it's really just one combined project on 10 Mile Road and Victory. It's delayed from, sorry, let me flip through here, from 2021 to 2022 due to some program balancing, which includes widening the road and making that intersection more of a roundabout. And so they are delaying that until 2022 to get some, some more funding for that. And then, under the removed projects, they have one on Locust Grove between Fairview and Eustick. Originally, their, their plan was more to widen that section of road to five lanes. It's currently three lanes, but they're worried that because there's so many residential homes in that, that section of road, widening it to five lanes would kind of put the road right in those residents' backyards. So they think maybe it'd be better to, to make it more of a pedestrian corridor with better biking, better walkability, and they want to discuss that more with, with city staff rather than go ahead with the, the five-lane widening of Locust Grove. And those were, were the main changes. The Transportation Commission doesn't have any comments on it, and public comment is open until the 19th, so we just wanted to get this in front of commission if they had any comments that they want us to send over to ACHD prior to Monday, the 19th, we can send them that letter.
Sorry, Dean. Thank you, Ryan.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Ryan, thank you so much. Wondering what the pedestrian crossing regarding the library and the school will look like. I was in some very preliminary conversations regarding that, and we had things, of course, a hawk signal discussed, and then even a, like an overpass walkway discussed, and I was wondering kind of what transpired out of that that we would actually be getting.
Yes, let me look through here to see what they have on here. I know it's not an overpass. So they say they want to install an enhanced crossing, pedestrian hybrid beacon on Cherry Lane between West Eighth and Linder, sort of require relocation of the existing school zone beacon to the west, so more like the, the walkway we have right here at City Hall along Meridian Road.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Good try.
Yeah, I, I know council, we need to get a letter to Ada County Highway District. Do you want to give direction today or wait until next week?
Madam Mayor, I think it's due on the 19th, so it's before your next meeting.
Yeah, that's, I was just grabbing my calendar to see. Yeah, so. I need a motion.
Madam Mayor, what are we moving on?
We don't. We stop in traffic.
So on the 19th, Madam Mayor, if there'll be a draft letter that...
Do you have any concerns with the plan that's being presented?
Madam Mayor, no.
Okay. That's good. Usually, we do provide comments, and so if you don't have any, we certainly don't need to write a letter, but if you did have a concern and wanted it articulated for their, their meeting, certainly we would need to know now. Okay, doesn't sound like it. Item four C is under our Fire Department and Arts Commission, and I'll ask Hillary to present.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, this was presented to you in July when I wasn't here, and it was continued so that you could get more feedback or input on the difference of the $5,000. Essentially, the first round of RFP was released under the budget of $30,000. MAC came to you and requested to increase that, and it was increased and released to $35,000. And even though the same artist applied for the $35,000 project, that remains the recommendation from the Arts Commission. I think the intent is to honor what was advertised in the RFP for $35,000. I did reach out, though, to the artist for the justification of the $5,000 increase, and it is essentially an increase in just his cost of labor. So he estimates 200, I believe I included this in your packet as well, he estimates at least 250 hours of labor. And he essentially proposed under the first RFP, just because he really wants to do another project here in Meridian. It's his hometown, and it matters to him, but he also wants to be paid for the work that he's doing. So I found it interesting in the itemized budget page that was included in your packet. His cost of labor, like I said, was where the $5,000 increase is, but you would see below what, in the final table that says ideal itemized budget, what he should be charging us. The cost of labor alone is $25,000. So if we wanted, if we really wanted a sculpture like this, a bronze, because it is a labor-intensive project, it would cost closer to $75,000 if we were honoring the artist's regular hourly labor rate. Daniel Borb is willing to reduce that rate because he wants to be involved with the city of Meridian. And I hope you had time to review his letter on your own as well, because I don't want to read it for you unless you want me to. But he also suggested towards the end of the budget that he could, in his proposal, he included that it would be a, he would make additional casts to help recover the cost of that, what would have been $75,000. If he can make additional casts of the work, it helps him recover some of those costs. So he said he could reduce the number of casts or additions to eight instead of nine to hopefully help you guys understand the value of the $5,000 difference. I mean, he's not going to sell an individual sculpture for $5,000, but he'll reduce that, that number of additions if the $5,000 is such a concern to you guys. And I'll stand for other questions. Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Hillary, I read his letter, and it makes perfect sense to me. I understand exactly why now the number is what it is, and I hold nothing against him for that. However, as stewards of public dollars, I think it would be highly inappropriate for us to now just go ahead and award that, because it was something that was proposed on the last one. It was the, the second choice, just barely, if I remember right.
Yes.
And, and so we upped the budget to get something different, and instead now we're going to go with what was the second option and pay extra $5,000 of the, the public's money. So my recommendation would be that if we're wanting to go with this, that we need to back up, do the RFP again, but again, move the budget back down to the 30 with the added language that you had added about trying to go for the gender, to, to not know what it is, essentially. And I imagine we'd get the proposal again and accept it at that point, but I don't think it would be right for us to have made this mistake and have it cost the public $5,000.
Okay, any other conversation, discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I kind of got lost a bit. I don't know what, what mistake.
I can't speak to a mistake personally.
Is, is it a, Madam Mayor, is it a matter of an RFP for a set amount to provide something, and this was the selection?
Yes, so we, we released a second version of the RFP for $35,000. This was the response to that RFP, and this was the recommendation. So there was an initial RFP that was for $5,000 less, where this one, we didn't recommend any of them at that time.
Okay, makes sense.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burke.
I, I, I think that this would be, this is going to be a fantastic addition to the fire station. I'm excited to see what it's going to look like. My question may be to you or maybe to the chief is, was there any discussion maybe with the union or other organizations that might have any interest in this piece of artwork as well?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Burnt, I was, I was brought into this loop by Hillary just from more an operational perspective. How is this piece of art going to affect the operations of the new station, and then also some high-level considerations of what it looks like on the front? But really, I was the only one brought in to be asked about that. Nobody else in the department was specifically asked, as far as any union members were not brought in to, to inquire their opinion of the art.
Now, this has primarily been Arts Commission project.
Correct.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
It, it is, this is a hard one. I, I agree with Councilwoman Palmer in a lot of ways, that the way that this kind of came down, and, and now it's just costing us an extra $5,000 is, sucks. There's not another, I can't even think of a better word. But, but reading his letter, I realize that it still is a, a value, I almost say bargain, because it's a lot of money, but it is undervalued for what the art would normally cost. I think putting out another RFP, I mean, we're just spinning in circles, putting out another RFP and wasting more time and money doing that process. So I'm inclined to approve it, however, you know, I wasn't at the commission meetings when the first RFP came through, and I guess I kind of wished that I had, I had a little bit more background on that, and, you know, whether they didn't select it, but now they did. When we raised the price, they selected it. It's a little wishy-washy to me, and I don't like that, but it's still, if you look at the, what he's making per hour, it's, it's still under what it should cost, so I'm okay with it. Thank you, Hillary.
Sure. Do you want me to elaborate more on the discussion from the first RFP? So the highest-scoring work from the first RFP was actually from an out-of-state artist that also produced bronze, and then this was the second highest-scoring one that was also bronze, and then I believe there were two or three, I'm forgetting now, additional pieces that just didn't seem to fit the RFP very well at all. The initial kind of gut reaction from the Public Art Committee members from the first RFP was that I think they weren't expecting to get bronze proposals, because I think they're also aware that bronzes are expensive, and we, they weren't happy with the fact that three of the proposals received were all representative of, of male figures, so that was something that the first RFP didn't include, or specifically include, that we were interested in kind of a nonspecific gender or symbolic. There was really a lot of, of emphasis on using Fire Department symbology in the work. So I think beyond just the proposals received, we realized we had stronger intentions that we weren't aware of before, like we were hoping to get something that we were just like, yes, that totally fits the bill, and nothing fit the bill, and we realized that we wanted something more specific. And then the hope was that the increase of $5,000, although to an artist, it might not be much to the Arts Commission and to the city, it means a lot more, but our hope was that that would encourage people to at least take notice of the call after talking to more artists. That's kind of where they start first, is like, is it even worth my time to respond to a call for this, or will I be turning my wheels, or will I not be able to make it all pencil out? So our hope was that that additional $5,000 would make it pencil out for some other people, and we did get some additional responses. But we, after further discussion with, with the committee, we decided that we liked this figure the most, and that was something that fire staff also said that this was the most relevant to, to them. There were some others that were very abstract, that they really were leaning towards the symbolic nature, but it wasn't as obvious, so that was, seemed as less desirable. I think in the end, they, the fire staff liked that this was something that was representative of, of what they do, the work that they, that they do, and it's apparent in just looking at it. So I don't feel like, personally, I don't feel like a mistake was made. I understand that there's a price difference.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm having a hard time hearing Hillary.
Oh, sorry. I'll speak in this, in the microphone more.
Thank you.
So I was just saying, I personally don't feel like a mistake was made. I think if anything, we put out a call, council approved the, the budget, and we should honor that, that budget that was released, because that's what we told the artists, we were going to pay them.
Madam Mayor, sorry, I'm sorry that I'm interrupting again. You started really good, and then you just went silent. I don't know if maybe one mic is working and one that's not.
I think it's just my, my voice, Luke. I'm sorry, Mr. Cavanagh.
All right, thank you.
I don't know what you heard or didn't hear, but essentially, I, I think that, that the value that we're getting for this project is still really significant. I think that if we wanted a project of this nature, we probably should be paying a lot more than we're getting. I think we're still getting a lot of value for what we've put out. I understand that the difference is $5,000, but I think that it's still a very valuable project and that it will still have the impact that both fire and the Arts Commission are seeking to have.
Madam Mayor. And I think the, the point is important that it is, you know, $5,000 is a significant amount to an artist or, or to the, the commission, but it's also significant to the additional 10 families whose entire portion of their Meridian City property taxes would go to this single piece of art alone. It, it's never too late to make the right decision. There's a reason that the decision is before us as a council is because now it's here and, and it's on us as to whether this is the right move to make or not, not simply to accept the recommendation of the commission because that's what they do, but it's before us because it's on us to make the right decision. That's what, they put out the RFP again, new proposals were presented, they had the same proposal as, as last time, that was not even their first option. To, to take their, not even their first option, and then give an extra $5,000 is, is extremely hard for me to, to swallow here. And so at, at this point, it's, the right decision is to not pay $35,000 for this project.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I guess there's a little rebuttal to that. So it's, listening to Hillary, substantial changes were made. It's not the same proposal, and changes were made that would have maybe pushed this, had it been presented like this, it might have been a first place consideration the first time around, but it wasn't. And he went back to the drawing board, and he made changes that, that the Arts Commission requested, he made changes that the Fire Department requested, so it's, it is a different proposal. And it might be the same type of work, but it's, it's a different proposal, and he made the changes that made it what the Arts Commission was looking for.
Madam Mayor.
And that's why I support it.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, the only change to that tax per proposal was in the rendering, in the first version, the figure was standing, and the rendering in the second version, the figure was kneeling, and $5,000 was added to the labor, as was explained in, in his letter, not for any additional labor that the new version takes, just because he has significantly more labor, and he needed to max out the, the RFP budget. Then that was the exact same figure, just kneeling to standing, or standing to kneeling.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Hillary, now is this piece of artwork, is it included in the $50,000? If so, where is the, are we on the budget, or is it a separate budget item within the Arts Commission?
This is, this is a MAPS project, so this was within our $50,000 MAPS ordinance funding.
And, and follow-up, and we are still within our $50,000 budget with the $5,000 increase?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Burnt.
Hillary, thank you for your time this afternoon. I, I have a quick question, I, just sort of a follow-up question for my previous question about whether the union was involved. I, if, would, would, would the Arts Commission, would they be open to like a third party getting involved that may, may or, may or may not contribute to this to maybe offset the cost, or maybe have some ideas in, in regard to the, the piece of art?
I think the Arts Commission would be willing to enter that conversation. I understand that there was some, some talk, I don't know who it was with, but amongst fire union people that had wanted to pay tribute to somebody that they had lost, but that takes away from the fact that we wanted it to be kind of a universal figure rather than just recognizing one person. So I think they did offer to help support the, the sculpture if it recognized that person. We could go back and ask if they would still contribute that without it recognizing that person, if we could recognize them some other way, but I'm not, I have not previously been involved in those conversations.
So I, I get that, because, you know, you, you, the proposal is for like a general neutral statue, and I think that that's what it depicts, and I think it's nice. I, I, I think that, I, you're right. I think that they wanted to pay tribute to a fallen
Individual.
Individual who passed away, that used to work for the Fire Department, the Meridian Fire Department. I think that there might, I think that they might be open to other discussion. I don't think that, that, I don't think that they want to totally change the look of the statue by any means, but if smart minds could get together and maybe discuss options, I, I think that it could be advantageous. I'm, I'm not trying to draw a line in the sand. I don't think that they are, I don't think anyone is, but maybe a discussion, a respectful discussion in regard to maybe thoughts and direction in, in possible financial additions as well. I, I think it would make sense just to have the talk, just have a discussion about it. If it makes sense, great. If it doesn't, let's move on. It just may be a solution.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Appreciate the conversation of the council. I guess the question probably for Mr. Derry, our options tonight are either to approve the RFP or deny it, correct?
It's not the RFP, it's the proposal.
Madam Members of the council, so Councilmember Cavanagh, the, the RFP is already done, so the proposal that's before you is to approve this recommendation from the Arts Commission.
Madam Mayor, sorry, follow-up, and I apologize that I'm asking questions while on the phone. If the council doesn't want to approve it, what are our options?
So Madam Mayor, members of the council, if you don't want to approve this, then I guess the direction would be similar to what you did before. You either reject this recommendation with a new direction to the Arts Commission on what to do. You can, I, I guess that's really it. I think you can send it back and send it back for another go-around if that's your direction.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
One more question. If we were to approve this recommendation and then conversations happen with the union and they want to put in some money towards that, that's still acceptable? Is that, would that be correct? At, at some point where the money would just come, some of the funds would come from a different place other than the MAPS funding?
So, so Madam Members of the council, I mean, yeah, that's, that's a different conversation. I mean, if you wanted to engage with another group such as the, the Fire Union to participate in an art project and coordinate that with the Arts Commission, that's certainly an option, if that's what you'd like to direct this project back to the Arts Commission to do, that's certainly your option.
Madam Mayor, so for clarification, so that can't happen, if we, we can't approve this and then have those conversations, that would have to happen prior to the approval of this? We approve it regardless, and then, you know, like we've done with some community partnerships, and then you get some money from somewhere else, and funding just changes a little?
So Madam Members of the council, I guess what I think Hillary's needing, we, we would have a contract with this artist to move forward.
Sure.
If the request is, does another group such as the Fire Union want to participate in this project, again, I don't, I think I'm kind of with Hillary, I don't know the specifics, I don't know their interests, I don't know what they're willing to participate, and whether or not this particular project is of interest to them. If you're talking about a art project with them, that may be more of what they want, but again, I don't know. If you don't want to approve this project going forward, until you know that answer, again, that'd be a different question to ask before you approve anything.
Madam Mayor, so my question isn't whether that we will have an agreement with them. The question is legally, can we, after this approval, can we, if they decided that was something they wanted to do, we would be approving it based on, we're approving it regardless for, with the MAPS funding, but then if, well, this is in the process of happening, could we legally have that conversation with the union and see if they want, if, in this particular project, the way that it is, if they wanted to participate, they could, you know, pay for a placard or something?
So Madam Members of the council, yeah, again, I think it's a slightly different project you're talking about. If you're asking, do they want to contribute to the $35,000 cost? Yes, but technically, what the money would do would typically go back to the MAPS fund, because we would contract to do it and simply pay the bill when it's done based on our contract out of the MAPS funds. If they want to re-contribute money to the MAPS fund in conjunction with something else related, that's fine, or just because they like this project, they want to contribute back, they could do that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we accept the recommendation for public art at Meridian Fire Station Number Six from the Meridian Arts Commission.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I'll just be brief. I, I'm going to be voting against this, and I just wanted to explain my reason why. I appreciate the work of, of the Arts Commission. I just cannot find a valid justification to accept this, this proposal at a $5,000 increase. I think that, taking another crack at this, again, incorporating some of the feedback that Councilmember Burnt has shared seems justified. Understand the desire to move forward, but I just, the, the fiscal element to me is just too much to muster. Because I can't justify it, I'll be opposed. can't justify it, I'll be opposed to the motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I think this has a lot of potential to be a great project, I think I will, I will be voting no, not because of the project itself, more along the lines of the motion, I just would like to get, just, and I don't mean to complicate this at all, and I don't mean to prolong this discussion, I just think it's important that, you know, if we have a third party that has, you know, that wants, that has an opinion, that wants to share their opinion, and whether or not it's the right project for it, or whether or not the Arts Commission accepts what the third party has to offer, is totally on them, and it's a different discussion, but I want them to have that talk before, and I want to have all of those things taken care of before I vote for this project.
No, I think it's really unfortunate that someone comes in in the 11th hour, this is the second time it's gone out for an RFP, and we certainly had an opportunity to enter into these discussions before this. It, as the Arts Commission has stated, they're concerned that it would change the whole idea behind this particular piece of art. Doesn't mean that we don't have the conversation, but to deny something based on something that could possibly be, that did have an opportunity to have conversation before today, or even before the second RFP was voted on, is really unfortunate. I would hate to see a project set aside because of a potential that did have an opportunity to happen before tonight.
Madam Mayor, I totally, and I don't disagree with what you just said at all, I'm not, I don't believe it, I'm not denying the project, I think the project's great, I just, I'm not in favor of the motion, I, I, I just would like to have, and I understand that, you know, let's close the door on this, let's vote yes or no, and just get rolling, but in this instance, I think that, you know, just, I know that another talk is going, some further discussion is going to take place, and if we, this is a permanent fixture that's going to be beautiful, and it's going to be a great representation of a, of who we are as a community, and a wonderful, traditional, proud department, you know, what's another week or two to get it right, you know, and that, I guess that's my point of view, I'm not against, I'm not against the artwork, I just, I just would like to have that, and I'm not saying that the project needs to be changed in any way, it's just hear what they have to say, and if it makes sense, great, if it doesn't, let's move on, that's all I'm saying.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Yeah, there's a better way to still have this happen, and have it happen in the right order. And if you're to review the minutes of the meeting in which the new proposal was asked of us, there was definitely discussion, and a little bit of attempts to maybe not do this, but, so let's figure it out, and let's get it done the right way, so with that, as a substitute motion, I move that we deny the recommendation from the Arts Commission. And instead of giving you instructions on what to go do, I want to leave it as a blank slate, is go to work and figure out what would be the best move to find additional funding, or find other adjustments as necessary.
Madam Mayor.
Ms., well, before we have any discussions, I have a second. So we're still discussing.
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Ms. Mylum.
I guess, I have a question for Councilman Burnt on, what is, you said you didn't like the original motion, what was it specifically that you didn't like about the motion, what would you have changed?
It just was continued, Madam Mayor, it was just continued, instead of, you know, to a future date, in a couple of weeks.
What is it that you foresee happening, or what you've heard?
I just, I would just like this third party to have an opportunity to get involved, and maybe add some, some, something to the project financially, if it makes sense to the Arts Commission, and have a discussion what the third party would or wouldn't want that happen, is just, that's what I would like, just have it continue just another week or two, so they can have that talk.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I guess I just feel like they've had plenty of time, we've been talking about this, this has been on the table for a long time, so unless there's a reason that they have not had an opportunity, not have the time, that you can say, then, I mean, I could pay the $5,000 to put my name on it.
A great idea, I'll do it too.
Madam Mayor, I don't want to make light of the situation, I don't, I, that could be a topic of the discussion, and maybe it's just not appropriate, maybe it's, maybe it's not the right time, nor the right project, and that's fine, and if that's, and if that's what they decide, that's great, I don't have any problem with that, but I don't see the harm, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm in the minority, and that wouldn't be the first or the last time, and I respect that, but just, just a discussion, and I don't know why they didn't find out about it, I don't know why they waited, I don't think, I don't think myself or the union is injecting to complicate this, they're just interested, and if it's the right thing, great, if it's not, great, I don't think anyone's trying to cause any waves, or trying to ruffle any feathers, or trying to complicate anything, I think they just want to have a, see if there's any interest in their involvement, and if there is, fine, if not, great, that's, and that's my only, that's my only, I guess that's all I'm saying.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt, I guess I would say, I think it's great that they have an interest in recognizing a fallen firefighter, I truly do, whether I agree that this is the right project or not, they certainly can step up and pay the $35,000 and have a memorial to the fallen firefighters. This is just different, the proposal went out with a whole different perspective in mind, I want to have that conversation with them, to see how we can work together as a city with our firefighter union to memorialize a fallen firefighter. I think that's very admirable, but this is not that project, and if they would like to donate to it without strings attached, to keep with the ideals of what was put out there, that's great. I know that our finance department has cautioned council in the past, that when you deny an RFP and you put it out again, you will, you get what you get, and that was seen here. So, really, that's, we're comparing apples and oranges, it really is that, so, any other discussion? Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I'll, honestly, I'm sitting here kind of struggling, because I certainly understand wanting that third party, especially having known who they plan on honoring, and I don't want that to get in the way, I was at a training yesterday, and did not realize that one of our female firefighters was part of the training until these very helmets that we're discussing in the piece came off, and so, so I'm very supportive at this point of both, I think that it'd be great to somehow down the road have that discussion and honor a fallen firefighter, also think that this fits exactly the position, the bill that we wanted it to, so, so trying to get those two to work right this moment's not working too well, but I understand we put out a second RFP, and I think that we need to move forward with this piece, and move forward with that discussion on how do we honor, work together if that's what everybody wants, to create a way to honor a fallen firefighter. So I think that's definitely, whatever happens today has brought that to light, and at this point, I would support moving forward with this piece.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
You mentioned there will be seven additional molds of this available, so maybe there's a great deal to happen on the next one.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Just maybe even to simplify it, kind of going off what you said, you know, when you go for a second RFP, you take the risk of getting what you're going to get, this project wasn't what was wanted at 30,000, so to go with that project at 35,000 just doesn't make sense.
Can I call a question?
Yes. Mr. Clerk, will you call, all, this is voting on the substitute motion to deny the recommendation from the Meridian Arts Commission on this piece.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum.
No.
Councilmember Burnt.
No.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
No.
Councilmember Kavner.
Aye.
Councilmember Borden.
No.
We have, the original motion was to approve the recommendation from the Meridian Arts Commission, any further discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner.
No.
Councilmember Borden.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for hanging in there, Hillary, and for bringing the information, we know that you are the messenger.
We're always life-long learners, aren't we?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
It's fun having you all afternoon.
Thank you. Item 4D is under solid waste and recycle material cart location of placement ordinance update. Wow, that is a mouthful right there, hi Alex.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I can't hear you now, I don't know if you turned off your mic or something, but I can't hear you anymore.
No, I'm sorry, I'm really loud in the council chamber, so, is that better?
That is.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon, thank you for having us. Tom is going to give the update on this ordinance in just a moment, but I think a few of you have had a chance to meet him, but this is his first opportunity to be in front of all of you, so we thought this would be a good opportunity to do a kind of a formal introduction here, so, this is Tom Adi, he is our solid waste coordinator, Tom comes to us from the private sector, he has over a decade of experience in this industry specific, so he brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to the city, we are extremely excited and happy to have him on board, looking for great things, and very, very excited that he has joined the team, so just wanted to give an opportunity to say hi, and introduce him to the team. I'm going to now get out of his way, so he can talk trash with all of you, so.
Welcome, Tom.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, what you're seeing today is just a clarification of existing ordinance language on cart placement, there have recently been some complaints and some questions from the citizenry about actual cart placement, this is just a cleanup of that language to make sure everything is safe and efficient for pedestrian sidewalk use, and for servicing with our contracted service provider.
And Tom, this doesn't change our policy, it just clarifies it.
Correct.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
If I could just add to what Tom stated, we've had this discussion, recall, some people in the, in the disabled community have been concerned about access on sidewalks, and so that was really the focus of this discussion, was trying to move the carts in as much, as many locations as possible, off of the sidewalk into the street, and they are handled in the street in the majority of Ada County, so this is not a significant change county-wide, but it will be a change for our customers, and so we have worked, and Tom especially, but in also Shandy Land with the mayor's office, in creating educational outreach material to get people to understand what they need to do differently, because this will be a change for some, I think if you drive around a city, you see carts sometimes in the street, and sometimes in the sidewalk, and it's kind of a mixed bag, and where probably where people had come from, but this is really to clear that up, and make it clear where we'd like the carts to be, you give some out on areas where we don't want them in the street, such as arterials, like Cherry Lane, Meridian Road, those kind of places, but, it should make it uniform throughout the city, and provide better access to people on the sidewalks, and we would like a public art piece, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, that was so bad. Any other questions, comments?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Were you going to show us the video, Tom?
I was not prepared to do that tonight.
I thought we were going to see the video tonight, okay, they prepared a really awesome video that shows proper cart placement as well.
If you can maybe email the city council with a link to the video, that would be awesome.
Absolutely, be happy to.
Unless it was supposed to be at a future meeting, I can't imagine. What kind of action are we looking for, is it on an ordinance, or are we just?
So, Madam Members of the council, if you're okay with the ordinance that's drafted, we'll put it on for reading next week, we can put it on for all three readings, and move it forward now, if you're comfortable with that, if you'd like to have some opportunity for public input, you put it on for one reading with public input, and then put it on for the second week for approval.
Let's do that.
Okay.
I think, ready, ma'am?
So, put it on for a public comment, and possible action.
Yeah, there's no, yeah, there's no comment.
And Tom, if you can work with Shandy in getting out good notification to the community about that.
Yeah, we have a comprehensive communication plan ready to go, we just need to know when it goes into effect, and we'll put everything into place.
Okay, it's more if we can make sure that we get good notice through our various social media outlets, that we'll have an opportunity for public comment on this ordinance update, and then council can take action.
Staff will get it done.
Okay, awesome, thank you, and I assume that, well, you're not the next item, it looks like Mr. Neri is, right?
No.
Well, I think actually Tom was going to.
Okay, and I will ask you to comment then on item 4E, which is the advisory, solid waste advisory committee membership qualifications, the revision to that ordinance.
Brief history on this, Madam Mayor, members of the council, with our city growing at the rate it is, our trash and recycle needs and issues are becoming more complicated, staff came to SWAC and said they would like to have a way to word it, so they would be able to get more industry experts onto the commission, if it's the pleasure of the mayor and the council, so this ordinance change is just to make it so we can have up to two technical experts on the, on the actual commission itself. Mr. Neri would have a little bit more insight into the exact wording and the legalese of it, but the long and short of it is, they just wanted to be able to have up to two members that were industry experts.
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, currently Dave Neal sits on the solid waste advisory commission, he's an industry expert, but as Tom stated, it has become, as all of you know, even from the discussions we've had with this council, the area that we deal with from the SWAC is much more complicated today than it was a year, two to five years ago. This isn't necessarily targeting anybody to be in the SWAC commission, it was morally to give the opportunity, if it's there, to help out the citizen members of the commission to understand, there was some discussion about an imbalance of residents versus non-residents on the commission, all of our commissions can be up to nine, so we're not real concerned that two would throw that off, currently we have, see if Tom is at six?
Five.
Five, we have five, that's right, five currently, but this also requires our youth member be a resident as well, so the imbalance is unlikely, because again, you're going to have at least three to two, as it is currently situated now, so we don't envision that being a problem, but we did want to make sure that the commission, and especially the citizen members, were getting the best feedback and information that's available in the industry, so that was the intent of this.
Any questions for Tom or Bill? This also needs to move forward.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we can put this on for next week, if you're comfortable with it, if you want public input, I don't know if there will be, we can do it the same way, we can put it on for one hearing if they want input, with the possibility to take action if you wish.
You might as well.
Might as well, I doubt there'll be any input, but, I don't know.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks.
And thank you for trying to stand, or braving standing in front of city council.
Thanks for talking trash.
It's nice talking trash with you, yes. Okay, item five is an executive session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
We'll be going to executive session pursuant to Idaho State Code 74206, 1D and 1F.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn into executive session, Mr. Clerk, will you call, all?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner?
Aye.
Councilmember Borden?
Aye.
All ayes.
Who's this from?